Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to this Wednesday, May 9th, convening of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father and giver of life, we thank you today for giving us friends, family, and neighbors. As we approach Mother's Day, we ask a special blessing for all mothers. We ask you that you grant them a blessed day filled with love and time together with those they hold dear. Please help us to treasure each moment and to seize every moment to create new precious memories that we will cherish in all the years to come. As always, we seek your wisdom and guidance in the business presented before us today. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.04, the presenter fell ill, and that item will be rescheduled for a later meeting. As well as item 13.02, additional materials were added since the posting of the agenda item.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Miller? If you want me at the podium first. Right. I've asked Commissioner Miller to join me because she's going to kick off these proclamations with a proclamation to honor Bike Month.
Hello, everybody. How are you tonight? I'd like to ask Yvonne Steiger to come up here with me. Is Yvonne here? Yvonne is the... She's representing the City-County Bicycle Working Group. Well, it's Bike Month, so everybody better get on to the wheels. I'm going to read our presentation declaring this Bike Month. Whereas, for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. And whereas the education of residents on the proper and safe operation of bicycles and motor vehicles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas various cycling organizations and independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness for bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has been named a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists. And whereas the city of Tallahassee continues to make investments in bicycle infrastructure like FAMU Way and the protected bike lanes downtown. And whereas the city of Tallahassee is ranked number three in America's Best New Bike Lanes in 2016 by People for Bikes. There are a lot of bike organizations out there, folks. And whereas the city of Tallahassee is one of the top 50 best bike cities according to Bicycling Magazine. And whereas the city of Tallahassee was the first city in the county... or, I'm sorry, in the country to launch the Pace Bike Share service. Now, therefore, I, Nancy Miller, for, standing in for my mayor, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in him as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, along with the Tallahassee City Commission, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Bike Month in Tallahassee and urge all citizens to participate in community events celebrating cycling. Yvonne.
Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Gillum, and other commissioners, I want to thank you for the proclamation on behalf of all the recreational cyclists in Tallahassee, and maybe more importantly, those people who use bicycles as a mode of transportation, the ones who don't have cars. They really need to have those safe bicycle lanes and those safe bicycle trails. I moved to Tallahassee 42 years ago. It was 1976. I did not have a car. And so, for the first four years in college, I had to use my bicycle. Tallahassee was different. We had 75,000 people then. Now, we have over 200,000 people. At the time, there were about, I would say, 10 to 15 cyclists. I knew them all. Nowadays, there are thousands of bicyclists. I know like scarcely 1% of them all. At the time, there were no bike lanes, no bike trails, we didn't wear helmets, and there was no education about the need for bike safety. That has changed radically. And I can really thank Tallahassee because I have seen the bike lanes appear, I have seen the bike trails appear. And the main reason why that's important is it creates safety. The fact is, the more bike paths you have, the more people that want to try it. So, if a person feels safe, they will try a bike. I couldn't get all the recent statistics about bike accidents or bike-related accidents for this year, but last year, at this time of year, there had already been 23 bike-related accidents. So, if you extrapolate that out, we had maybe over 80 last year. So, you can understand why the need for bike safety is so important and the need for bike lanes and bike trails is so eminently important for our community. And like Commissioner Miller said, we are getting creatively beautiful bike paths and bike trails and bike lanes. And we use them. We cyclists use them. We cyclists who are recreational cyclists, we use them. We cyclists who need it for transportation, we really use them. So, on that note, I can just say that I thank you again for the proclamation, and thank you very much.
All right. I want to invite my colleague, Commissioner Curtis Richardson, who will make a presentation at the Tallahassee... excuse me. Lincoln High School Boys 4x800 Male Relay. Is this the male relay?
Male relay.
Male relay team. Very, very special recognition. Commissioner Richardson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. It is my pleasure, actually, to be able to present this next proclamation, partly because my daughter is a 4x800 relay team member, and they just participated in the state relay in Jacksonville this past weekend. They didn't win. She goes to Rickards High School. But she also was a teammate of one of the relay team members from Lincoln that have achieved this phenomenal feat, Charles Ruda. And Charles is a member of the team, so I'm particularly happy to be able to present this proclamation this afternoon. And the proclamation reads... You want to go ahead and invite them up now? Okay. All right. Well, we'll invite the head coach, Coach Corey Poole, the assistant coach, Chris Sumner, and relay teams Byron Jackson, Charles Ruda, Amari Douglas, and Clayton Carlson, if you all would join us here at the podium. Got all the bling jangling. All right. Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations, Coach. The proclamation reads, whereas the Tallahassee Lincoln High School Boys 4x800 Meter Relay Team made history as they became the fastest team in the nation at the Pepsi Florida Relays hosted by the University of Florida in Gainesville on March 30th, 2018. And whereas it is Lincoln High's first national track and field relay team. And whereas it is the city of Tallahassee's first national high school title in any sport. And whereas the Tallahassee Lincoln High School Boys 4x800 Meter Relay Team ran an impressive time of 7 minutes 47.23 seconds. And whereas the city of Tallahassee congratulates the Tallahassee Lincoln High School Boys 4x800 Meter Relay Team and their coaches for their success as the fastest 4x800 meter relay team in the nation. Now, therefore, and this is on behalf of the mayor, I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Tallahassee's Lincoln High School Boys 4x800 Meter Relay Team for their great accomplishment with their national track and field win. Let's give them a hand. Okay. All right. Well, I will present the proclamation to Charles, who was an IB student with my daughter at Fairview.
Yeah, so was Amari, too.
Oh, okay. Great. Hey, Amari.
Want to just read this?
No.
Oh, okay. I'd just like to thank my teammates and my coaches and all the parents out there for, one, letting us go out there and run, and, you know... Again, I'd like to thank my teammates for picking up whatever slack that I left off. I know at Florida, when the first exchange happened, we had a big deficit to make up. It was no fault of the team. It was just a great leg by our competitors. And then, we slowly inched our way back into the race. And then Clayton brought it home for us. You know, the video is out on milesplit.com, FLrunners.com. You can watch it. And he just gave everything he had in that last 100 meters to get the win for us by just over a tenth of a second. And so, I'd like to thank my teammates a lot for being able to support me. I'd like to thank my coach, Coach Sumner, and Coach Poole, who's not with us right here, for taking time to each and every day work with us, you know, come out there as much as they can while also trying to provide for their families and just make sure that we could develop as athletes as best we could. And I'd like to thank the city right now for recognizing us.
That's all there is. All right. The next proclamation I would like to invite forward, Dr. Heather Flynn from Tallahassee Maternal Health Community Advisory Board and any other community advisory board members that may be joining her for proclamation as we honor perinatal health. How are you? Good. All right. Present this proclamation on behalf of the city, and the proclamation reads, whereas perinatal mental health is an issue of great concern to mothers and fathers and families as well as their health care providers and is therefore of interest to the city of Tallahassee. And whereas many women and men are not screened or treated for not sufficiently or not sufficiently informed about perinatal mood and anxiety disorders because they may lack comprehensive health care or the understanding of the disorder or where to go to get help. And whereas increased education and heightened awareness of the incidence of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders is critical for all citizens of Tallahassee. Perinatal mood and anxiety disorders do not discriminate. Families of all races, income levels, ages, and backgrounds are impacted profoundly, thus contributing to developmental, behavioral outcomes, and attachment disorders in young children of afflicted women and men. And whereas perinatal mood and anxiety disorders are treatable with timely therapeutic interventions, community-based supportive services, and medications. And whereas it is critical that citizens, communities, service providers, and support systems have a greater understanding of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders and spectrum of symptoms and critical factors in identifying mothers and fathers at risk in order to provide timely diagnosis and treatment, as well as appropriate support through community services and referral services that coexist to facilitate recovery. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim the second week of May 2018 as Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Week. Will you all give them a round of applause, and I invite you forward to make a few comments.
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you so much, Mayor Gillum and commissioners. I really appreciate the mention of Mother's Day. May is International Maternal Mental Health Month, and I'm just so pleased that this community has, year after year, recognized maternal mental health. Just what we're talking about here are mental health conditions, depression, anxiety, and other mental health conditions that occur around the time of having a baby. And as the mayor mentioned, these can confer great risks, not only for the mother throughout her parenting, but also for the developing baby, the infant. And a number of the issues that we face as a community can link back to untreated maternal mental health difficulties, including medical, social, developmental, and some extreme difficulties like suicide and even hurting one's children and violence risks. So, it's so critical as a community that we come together. Our maternal mental health advisory board has 21 members, including Megan Deitchen, who's a doctoral student in social work at FSU, and Claudia Blackburn. You might recognize her as the health officer for Leon County. We have many stakeholders, many of you in the room represented, all coming together to see what we can do to fill gaps in this topic. It'll be featured tomorrow at the mayor's summit on children, so hopefully we'll see many of you there, and thank you so much again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'd now like to invite forward for the next proclamation, Beth Dimono, Katie Kyle, Aleta, Jarrett, and members of the Local Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense Safety in America, and any other members who may be in attendance of this group who's been doing dynamic work, I have to say, these past several months and beyond. I'm pleased to read, or not as pleased, but will read, some of this resolution as it really does point out an epidemic confronting our communities. And the proclamation reads, whereas, this proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Tallahassee to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, 96 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides each year. And whereas Americans are 25 times, 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas protecting public safety in communities that they serve is not only mine, but this commission's highest responsibility. And whereas support for Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas mayors and local governments like ours and local law enforcement officers know their communities the best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas January 2013, Hadiya Peddleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 21st birthday. And whereas to honor Hadiya and the 96 other Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 1st, 2018, the first Friday in June, as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to advance... Hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they are out in the woods, and orange is also the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 1st, the first Friday in June of 2018, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 1st, 2018, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and their survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim the first Friday of June 1st, 2018, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor those valuable human lives that have been lost. Will you please acknowledge them as they come forward to receive the proclamation?
And we'd like to invite, actually, all of the community. We'll be hosting a community-wide event on Saturday, June 2nd, a Wear Orange event at Anita Favers Thompson Plaza from 10:00 to 12:00 in the morning. It is, and I guess it's a community-wide event, but geared mostly towards students. We'll be having free snow cones for students, art experience, chalk art. There's an open-mic contest with prizes, but open to the public. We'd love to have you, but again, June 1st, please support the community. Show your support for the victims and survivors of gun violence by wearing orange, and thank you very much.
I want to now invite Commissioner Scott Maddox forward, who will be presenting a proclamation on National Pet Month. He's going to acknowledge those who are here for this proclamation, but if y'all want to begin coming forward, I know it's a long list. Please join us here at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have every... Please come forward. We've got Jack Beasley, Susan Osteryoung, Crystal Benz, Maureen Thompson, Meredith Mank, Karen Kane, and Kate McFall. So, during National Pet Month, through the use of the city's TV station, social media outlets, and more, we're focusing on efforts to promote adoptions and fostering through the Tallahassee Animal Services and increasing awareness about responsible pet ownership and how to report suspected animal abuse, all in an effort to make Tallahassee an even more pet-friendly community. And many of you know that my dog, Blue, was sort of the poster dog for animal services and the effort to stop animal cruelty and to promote adoption. Blue passed away this last fall, and I believe he sent me a message from the Rainbow Bridge and told me to go to our animal service center where I found Zonka, who is gladly filling in where Blue left off. And these folks that are here, the names that I called earlier, are the true heroes when it comes to protecting our furry friends. These folks not only volunteer every day to make sure that we have a community that is welcoming and opening and protecting of animals, but they also foster animals in their own homes. And they have saved lots and lots and lots of lives by opening their doors and their hearts. Let's give them a round of applause. Mayor's fallen down on his job.
No, my bad.
So, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas, the month of May serves as National Pet Month, during which time the city of Tallahassee increases efforts to educate the community on animal welfare by promoting fostering, volunteering, and adoption. And whereas, Tallahassee Animal Services is comprised of dedicated individuals who work tirelessly to provide temporary housing and medical care for all stray and unwanted animals found and accepted through the city of Tallahassee Animal Control and Leon County Animal Control. And whereas, Tallahassee Animal Services intakes approximately 5,400 animals a year and is committed to evaluating, rehabilitating, and successfully placing as many as possible every year. And whereas, Tallahassee Animal Services, with the support of the Animal Shelter Foundation, runs a vibrant volunteer and foster program of 300 volunteers and handling about 800 foster animals a year. And whereas, the volunteers who serve the foster program provide a much-needed service for this community by taking animals into their home, caring for their medical, emotional, and social needs, and readying them for placement in forever homes. And whereas, the volunteers and foster parents are exhibiting the highest form of care and compassion for animals and service to their community, now, therefore, Andrew D. Gillum, by the authority vested in him as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, along with the Tallahassee City Commission and Zonka Maddox, do hereby dedicate this to our animal volunteer community and declare May as National Pet Month.
Hi, I'm Kate McFall, and I'm a very proud foster mom, and I've been a foster mom a very long time. I won't say how long. And I take this job very seriously, but make no mistake, it's a lot of fun, too. And when I plug this program around town, which Lauren is going to roll her eyes, I do all the time, people say, "Oh, I could never do that. I would be too sad when I found them a home." But the message is, it's not sad because it's a celebration when you find that animal there forever home. And you can be a support for that adoptive parent, and in the back of your mind, you've got somebody else at the shelter. You've got your eye on them, and you know that they need a foster home, and that gives you space for that next animal. The short-term, long-term, cats, dogs, medical, behavioral, anything under the sun, and just somebody who needs out. So, please think about becoming a foster parent and joining us up here because we always need wonderful foster parents. And I would be remiss if I didn't just very briefly recognize Heather Van Leeu, our fearless leader. She does a fantastic job, and she alone saves a lot of lives. So, she does a fantastic job running the foster program at Tallahassee Animal Services. So, we hope to see you there, fostering and volunteering at the shelter. And Crystal has something really brief to say as well.
Hi, I'm an actual foster parent. Yes, a parent, even though they're puppies, they're my babies. I started about five years ago. I took in a special-needs dog who was a senior, and he actually stayed with me, so I'm technically a foster failure. He was the love of my life. He became a therapy dog, and he served our community for four years. We visited nursing homes, schools, and people at the hospital, and his name was GB. It was through GB that I was able to meet wonderful people like these. I made so many friends. I made so many advocates and people that I could rely on, and it became more involved, and it became a mission for me. So, I am now the senior foster parent. I take in a lot of the seniors that have medical needs or that just need a space to go so that they can relax during their old and golden days. It's also through GB, when he passed, because of his presence in the community, we were able to raise $5,000 to go towards the shelter, and he now has a lifetime plaque. So, I just want you to know, it's not just about fostering. It opens up so many different avenues in your life, and it's such a wonderful, wonderful blessing. So, if you have any space, or you have any time, or you know anybody that can foster, please send them our way. We would love to add them to our family. Thank you.
I'm a foster mom for bottle babies. Those are the little baby kittens that are newborn, and they're bottle-fed every three hours around the clock. So, when I have kittens in my home, I don't sleep. I nap because 3 o'clock in the morning comes every morning. I'm also on the advisory board of the animal shelter. Three of us on the board are with the Osher Lifelong Learning Institute as well. And we've started a Senior for Seniors program, encouraging senior citizens to foster senior dogs and cats. Frequently, people don't want to take on the obligation of adopting an animal long-term, but just being able to foster a senior dog who had probably spent their entire life in somebody's home and now finds himself in a shelter when their owner dies, it's very, very rewarding to see how they respond when they're in somebody's home. So, if you need any... Know any seniors, you might want to encourage them. There's all sorts of benefits for the senior person, too. Thank you. Thank you.
I want to invite my colleagues to join us here at the podium. Mr. Maddox? This is a particularly special recognition that I asked my colleagues to join us for as we together acknowledge the heroism of some of our community's finest. I'd like to invite to join us here at the podium Tallahassee Fire Department Lieutenant Todd McLanahan, TFD, Tallahassee Fire Department, Engineer Dan Willis, Tallahassee Fire Department firefighter Jonathan Judy, Leon County Sheriff's Deputy Nicholas Kelly. Sheriff, will you also join us up here? We typically try to present keys to the city in a single ceremony, but on special and extraordinary circumstances, we want to make sure that we acknowledge those individuals who have performed extraordinary service in the moment. A little before 6:00 PM on April 27th, a car traveling approximately 50 miles per hour careened into the Oclocknee River with a woman trapped inside. This potentially catastrophic tragedy was averted by four responders, heroic efforts to rescue a fellow community member from drowning. Willis, Judy, and Kelly jumped into the water, while Lieutenant McLanahan ran to get rope and tools. These brave men were able to break the window of the automobile, attach a rope to the young woman, and get her safely removed from the vehicle. In honor of their bravery and extraordinary service to our community, it is my honor and the commission's honor to present them each a key to the city. That includes the county, by the way, Sheriff. The recipients, you're right, we are in your county, my bad. The recipients of these keys to the city do not set out to earn this recognition, or any award or recognition for that matter. Rather, they have leapt into action guided by their sense of duty and responsibility that each of them share when they take their respective oaths of offices. Recall that these are the individuals who run toward danger when many of the rest of us want to run away from it, and for that service, we are all very grateful. On behalf of the citizens of Tallahassee, Todd, Dan, Jonathan, and Nicholas, thank you for your heroism and your dedication to this community and to people who call this community home. I'd like to invite Sheriff McNeil and Chief Gaines to come up and say a few words now.
Thank you to the mayor and the commissioners. I have already had the opportunity to present to Deputy Kelly his life-saving award. We wanted to make sure that we were here today to make those same presentations to our firefighters. You know, saving a life is perhaps the ultimate in terms of service. That is what it's all about, to go out each and every day trying to make sure that we keep this community safe. So I'm going to read just one of the certificates that we will present to all three of the firefighters. It's the Leon County Sheriff's Office Certificate, Life-Saving Award, and it simply reads, "It is hereby presented to firefighters Jonathan Judy, Benjamin Willis, and Lieutenant McLanahan." And it reads, "In recognition for outstanding performance that saved a human life on April 22nd, 2018, in Leon County. This exceptional act under emergency conditions reflects the highest standard of conduct for first responders." Thank you. Congratulations, and God bless all of you guys.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. I want all the firefighters in this room to stand up. So with that, I want to say that each one of these individuals is a symbol of what we do on a daily basis that's put our lives on the line. And with that, I want to have Mr. Judy say a few words, because he was very instrumental in this, and I think it's the appropriate time for him to say something.
I want to thank you, Chief, and I want to thank everybody and members of the community. I definitely want to let you guys know it definitely was a team effort to really see all the agency come together, not only each member of the firefighter, but also Sheriff's Office, Leon County MS. But once again, like I said, it's a team effort. We were acting out of the love for our community, fellow man, fellow woman, and we do all I can to really uphold and serve the community and serve each and every one of you guys. Thank you, guys.
I thank each and every one of you for the service that you provide every day, and I am proud to lead this department, and I'm proud of the relationship that we have with the county. Congratulations.
I ask each of my colleagues to grab a respective key, and I'll go ahead and read what each of these plaques say. It has attached to it an actual key, although it doesn't open anything. This is, you could tell your friends otherwise if it helps. But each plaque is presented to each named recipient. This particular plaque is presented to Dan Willis. The City of Tallahassee hereby awards this key to the city on May 9th, 2018, and it has the city seal as well as the office of the mayor. I want to congratulate you on your heroism and thank you again for your service to this community.
Well, I have the pleasure of presenting to Nicholas Kelly, and I want to just personally thank you so much, all of you, for what you do. You don't hesitate. You just go get it done and take care of us all. So on behalf of me, my family, my grandchildren, I very, very much appreciate your service. So, how do you want to?
And Jonathan Judy, who we've already heard from, but thank you so much, and thanks to all of you for running toward danger rather than running away from it. And this presented to Jonathan Judy from the City of Tallahassee hereby awards this key to the city on May 9th, 2018. And a key to the city is the highest honor that a mayor can give. So it's the absolute highest honor. So I commend the mayor for bringing this forward.
Very quickly, I am honored, absolutely honored, to be able to present this key to the city to Todd McLanahan. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Good. This City of Tallahassee hereby awards this key to the city on May 9th, 2018, and it is signed, of course, by the mayor, the Honorable Andrew Gillum. And I personally want to thank each of you for the work that you do in keeping our community and our citizens safe, and just am very proud of the heroism that you all displayed at the spur of the moment to save a life. That just goes without saying how phenomenal that was, and thank you all so much for your bravery.
got some slices of cake just out the door. The other option is you could stay and enjoy the rest of the city commission meeting. I'm sure you prefer the cake. Again, we want to thank you all for your services, you and your families. And as these individuals exit the room, we also want to give a special thank you to, obviously, their families. We know that this is never an individual sacrifice, it's a family sacrifice. Commissioners, we're now in the part of the agenda where we will hear from speakers on unagended items. Mr. Treasury Clerk, are there any speakers on unagended items?
Mayor, you do mean speakers on items that are on the agenda.
I'm sorry. Correct, thank you. Agended items.
Yes, sir. We have just a couple of speakers at this time. The first will be Paula Smith. If she comes to the microphone, I'll let speakers know that you'll have three minutes for your remarks, if you'll give your name and address, and then get started. I'll give you a heads up when three minutes have been reached.
Thank you. Paula Smith, 1005 East Park Avenue. First, I want to thank you all for your love and commitment to our community. It shows every day in all the work and time you put in for each of us. And I know because of that love for our community, it is incumbent upon you to seek out the greatest opportunities for our future to keep us vital and attracting the residents, the visitors, the tourists that simply make our businesses, our nonprofits, our community succeed. The greatest opportunity that is before us is the acquisition of an art collection that is the biggest collection of art depicting Florida in the world. It's owned by Sam and Robbie Vickers. They are interested in contributing it here in the Capitol. We have looked at a home for that building. It's the Bloxham Building. The Bloxham Building is an island in the middle of the CRA. State buildings and school buildings were not included within the boundaries of the CRA, naturally, as they don't pay taxes. But as these state buildings are changing their purposes, that will change. And we are asking you to include the Bloxham Building within the CRA boundaries so that we have an opportunity to apply for the grant that's being let by the CRA from the TDT money. FSU, we have partnerships. FSU has agreed to own and curate the collection at great expense to them. The schools have agreed that the building is appropriate for the collection. It is the perfect size. It is the perfect location. The collection has the power to tell the story of our state like no words could ever do. Many of you have seen that collection. So I hope tonight you will vote on the amendment. The county unanimously voted last night to include this amendment on their agenda for their next meeting. I hope you will find consistent wording and do the same for the amendment from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, the next speaker is Teresa Frederick. I failed to mention that the previous speaker, for those who were watching or following along, is speaking on item 1302, which does deal with the CRA, as was obvious from her remarks. Ms. Frederick is speaking on item 1301, deals with our workforce training update.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gillum.
Good afternoon.
And members of the commission. My name is Teresa Frederick. I'm Special Assistant to Congressman Al Lawson, and I'm appearing on behalf of Congressman Lawson and Congressman Dunn, who both represent communities in the City of Tallahassee in the United States House of Representatives. I am here to speak briefly to convey their strong support, as evidenced by their bipartisan letter for the Disconnected Youth Initiative, sponsored by the city through Project Tempo, to engage the youth in Tallahassee between the ages of 16 and 24, who are not in school, who therefore lack a quality of education and training, and who are currently not in the workforce. They are known as the disconnected youth. The City of Tallahassee's Dr. Campbell Thomas visited both congressmen a few weeks ago and exposed them to a fiscally responsible approach unlocking the human potential of the disconnected youth that could potentially get this group of young individuals off the streets, back into the classrooms, for training, of course, and then on into the workforce. Both congressmen clearly understand that to be successful, that these initiatives must start from the local communities, because that's where the people are who know them and who are more than likely willing to give them a second chance in getting their lives back together, thus giving them the opportunity to become contributing members to society. This concept is not new. Municipal leaders and cities and towns across America are taking practical steps to initiate the disconnected youth, energize the disconnected youth, because after all, they are a significant part of our future. Our city in October 2017 seems to have launched a program here in Tallahassee that have produced rather resounding results. It is both congressmen's hope that the Tempo program will continue to thrive and to garner widespread support, not only with the city, but with the state and federal agencies as well. Congressman Lawson and Dunn are both willing and committed to assisting in the facilitation of that as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Frederick, for that great news. And, excuse me, we're appreciative of the bipartisan support of both members of our congressional delegation. And Dr. Thomas, who I'm sure you would agree is doing an excellent job, and we're hopeful for a good yield here.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Thank you. Please extend our regards. Next speaker.
Mayor, that is the last speaker we have on items that are on our agenda. We do have other speakers. We'll take them at the unagended portion of our meeting later.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, Mrs. Smith brought up the Bloxham Building and the ability for that to move forward in the grant process. I am in favor of that and would be willing to mirror what the county did to enable an application to come forward. Do we, I know this, we got an email that this is going to be agended on the May 23rd meeting. Do we need a vote to have that agended or a sign of support?
I don't know.
Or can it just come on the agenda?
I didn't see the notes. I'm not sure. What was the?
Mr. Mayor, what Ms. Smith brought up, so Kenny took action to have an agenda item at its next meeting to consider, basically a rule change, if you will, for lack of better description, that would enable the project that she referenced to qualify for the TDT grant funds. Certainly, I would look to you for your support. I could put that on your next agenda with the majority support of the commission. I'd be happy to do that. I'd love your direction on that.
I'd be in favor. What we're not, we're not saying that this particular group or this collection will receive the grant funds. We're saying that they can compete using that facility. The only reason why that facility is not included in the CRA, since it's smack dab in the middle of it, is because it's owned by government. So we wouldn't want that to preclude, I think, allowing the grant process to have the maximum amount of applicants so we can make the best decision possible for the entire community. And it seems to me pretty simple, just to allow them to apply.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner, I didn't even acknowledge you were on the phone. Commissioner Zipper.
That's okay. I just wanted a second, if it requires a second, Commissioner Maddox's recommendation. I'd like to see that on our next agenda item as well.
There's a motion and a second to add this item to the next city commission agenda. Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Miller.
I would not argue that this would be a wonderful project for our community. The issue that I have is the late notice that we got this. We haven't had an opportunity to review the project, and, you know...
And, you know, it took me four years, four years, to get an expansion of the CRA to cover areas of the south side of Tallahassee, areas that clearly exhibited the blight and slum that the legislature envisioned when they wrote that statute into law. And I, you know, we've said that we, we are not going to put more money into the downtown CRA, yet we're making special provisions here at the last minute to include a facility that we've, has not been determined to be eligible for CRA funds. And I just have a problem with that, when there are other organizations who are certainly within the boundaries of the CRA that are going through this process, have gone through this process for a number of months now, they're completing their applications, and I, I think this gives one organization, you know, an advantage over those that have been working diligently to get their applications in order and have been a part of this process for several weeks now. So I, although I, I think it would be a wonderful project for this community, I can't support the way in which this is being done at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller?
I'm just at a complete loss. I don't, because I haven't seen what the county did last night. I'm not sure what they did. I'm not sure, I don't know the circumstances surrounding the inclusion of another property in the CRA at this point, I mean, at this, in this venue that we're in tonight. I think the county is going to agenda a conversation on their next meeting, and I'm all for that. And if that's what the motion is for...
The motion is just to agenda it on, on our...
Right, thank you. That's what I wanted.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, so I'm clear, the motion is to agenda what?
A conversation.
The motion is to agenda, have an agenda item to explore adding the Bloxham Building into the downtown CRA for the purposes of an application for the $3 million worth of grant money for the, that project.
Got it. Well, the protocol for having an item agenda would be two commissioners consenting to having an item agendaed. It doesn't require a vote. If the question is whether or not we are going to expand the CRA boundaries at this late date to include a project that is currently outside of its boundaries, that's a different question, I'm against that. But if it's two of us that are agreeing to agenda this for the next meeting for conversation, it just requires two commissioners agreeing.
Well, and just for direction to staff, I'm interested in having the conversation because I really want this art exhibit, but, and I know that Ms. Smith's gone a tremendous amount of work to try to figure out where to put it, and she's been looking for a home for several years, shown it to all of us and all that. So we can talk about the feasibilities and how to get there from here, but that's the kind of information I'm going to want to know. How do you get there from here? And what are the costs? What are, the whole picture? And so I hope that you all can put all that together for us, and we'll discuss it again in a couple...
Well, I, I don't think that is the ask of, of staff. I think the ask of staff is whether or not we're going to, the ask is to agenda an item for us to consider the potential expansion of the CRA downtown boundaries. That's the appropriate ask to be made. I don't think it is, and we can clarify, obviously. I don't think it is that they're going to do a thorough vetting of this particular project. One, we're not the, we're not the entity to make that determination. The CRA would be the entity to make that determination. As a City Commission, obviously, we would have to vote consistent with the county to expand boundaries. Commissioner Richardson?
I guess I have a question, then. Is this to expand the boundary, or is this to include a building that was determined, because it's a, a state-owned building, not to be eligible for CRA funding?
If I could answer...
Please.
My intention is the latter. It is not to expand the boundaries. One of, one of the requirements for the grant funding is that you're in the CRA. The reason the Bloxham Building wasn't in the CRA is because it was owned by government, just like the Capitol's not in the CRA, even though it's right in the middle, in the midst of CRA property. So if, what I'd like to do is have the City Commission support, it doesn't necessarily have to move the Bloxham Building into the CRA, but to say that we will allow the application. So when we go through the grant process at the CRA, we have that as part of our application process, and we can make a decision then as to whether the Vickers' collection in the Bloxham Building is a higher and better use than any other applicant, or not. But because of this technicality, they'll be excluded from applying, and that's what I'm trying to fix.
But your, your request that Commissioner Ziffer has co-signed is to have this brought back for the commission to consider this question?
Yes, sir. I wouldn't, I would not spring it on, on the commission for a vote without any staff work. All I want to do is merely what the county has done, which is to agenda it, so the staff can give us all the options, and we can have the backup material, and then make a decision.
Got it. I'll just say, I'm not familiar with the county's actions. I'm only going to treat this in the sense of what the actions being requested is of the, of the city, which is to agenda this item to come back for a discussion before the City Commission. Commissioner Richardson?
I guess, so what, you know, and I'm still relatively new to all of this, I guess. Is it, is it in state law that a state building is not, a state-owned building is not eligible for CRA? How do we?
Hey, Wayne, I'm sorry.
What is it that determines that? Is it city policy, county policy, CRA policy, state statute that says that a state-owned building is not eligible for CRA funds?
Right, Lou?
Commissioner, a state building could be included within the CRA. If the issue here is application for these TDT funds, you can do that by changing an interlocal agreement. You do not have to amend the boundaries of the CRA. My understanding is what the county is, is going to look at is a change in an agreement. It can be done in one meeting to just expand the boundaries of who can apply for some TDT funds. You do not have to change the boundaries of the CRA.
But you just said expand the boundary.
Well, there's currently an interlocal agreement that says that a certain pot of TDT funds will be used within the CRA boundaries. And what you want to do is expand the scope of that, you can just say properties outside the CRA can, can apply for these TDT funds. It's part of an agreement. You do not have to expand the boundaries of the CRA to, to let this project be considered for those funds.
Commissioner Miller?
Properties outside the CRA, how far outside?
My understanding is this one's a couple of blocks outside.
No, the question, the commissioner's question is, is if you say that any properties outside the CRA can apply, the question is, is there a boundary to how, how far outside the CRA?
Mr. Mayor, if I could on point, just...
That's, that's fine, but if you could answer that question, and I'll go to Commissioner Maddox.
My understanding is that the county said that this Bloxham property, a couple of blocks outside.
I'm not, I'm not dealing with the, the county. The request is to expand the CRA such that any properties outside the CRA could apply.
That's not my request, and that's not my motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
So that's what I was trying to get to. First of all, what I'm trying to get to is an agenda item where we'd have all these questions answered. The City Commission could be free to say any project outside the CRA. The City Commission could say only the Bloxham Building. The City Commission could say projects that are surrounded on three sides by the CRA. The City Commission could say projects that are surrounded by four sides on the CRA. That's what an agenda item is for, is for what we would decide to enable it. These are the dollar, the big picture on this, these are the dollars that are left over that was originally earmarked for Performing Arts Center, and the CRA has made the decision to spend those dollars within the CRA and go through a grant process. The Vickers' collection, there's an opportunity for the Vickers' collection to go in the Bloxham Building in a partnership with Leon County Schools and Florida State University to have a collection of a much greater magnitude than local government could ever possibly afford to have, maintain or run. My point is that we should have a learned discussion on that as to whether or not we want to give them the opportunity just to apply, not to get the grant, but just to apply. Personally, I certainly would not be in favor of opening this up for any application outside the CRA. But I think when the agenda item comes back, we can come up with an agenda item that probably is in conjunction with the county that would recognize the opportunity here just for consideration, not for a grant award, to recognize the opportunity without changing the original legislative intent of the motion to begin with.
Got it. I'll, so, just to put this to rest, we don't need a motion to bring an item back. There are two commissioners who agree to bring, to have this question agendaed. So I think we acknowledge that that'll be brought back at the, a meeting in the future. As it relates to whether or not this board is in a position to consider this collection over anything else, I think, I want to align myself with Commissioner Richardson's comments that there is a process. This has been discussed now for four years. I believe that there were tours to see the Vicker Collection arranged maybe a year or two ago at one of the chamber retreats. I missed that opportunity, but I do understand it's an incredibly impressive collection. And so my comments are not to its value or, or not. It is to the fact that we have a process that organizations have followed. There are many of them out there who have followed it. And I think we owe it to those individuals and to this community to have some fidelity around that, the fact that we are now, I don't know how many weeks out from voting on an expansion or a decision on these TDC funds, but I believe this is the last meeting that the county has any say over, the next meeting, before we grant their request to be taken off. I do think that if there's a conversation about what to do with this building, we ought to have that. It is, it is an architectural jewel. It sits right in our downtown. We certainly shouldn't allow it to fall into disrepair. I'm happy to engage in that conversation. I'm not, certainly as one individual, prepared to see the rules changed at the very last minute when everybody else was following the same rules. So look forward to this item being brought back at the, at the, at the next meeting. Commissioners, we're now on to, there are no consent items.
Yeah.
Or they are, I'm sorry, there are no consent items pulled. We're now on to consent.
Consent, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to move consent. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to City Commission items. First item is 11.01. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this is a reappointment to your Leon County Minority Women in Small Business Enterprise.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes, 11.02.
Move approval of the mayor's appointments to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Approval of Special Events Advisory Committee reappointments of the mayors?
Second.
All those in fav, motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11.05.
Four, isn't it?
I'm sorry, 11.04.
Move approval of the mayor's appointments in the Municipal Code Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
One more.
At 11.05, move approval of the Tallahassee Housing Authority appointment by the mayor.
Second.
All those in, Commissioner Ziffer?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously, 11.06.
Move approval of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee appointment by the mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for moving through those. Introduction of ordinances, City Attorney.
Item number 12.01 is an introduction of ordinance number 18-0-13. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 2-1822 of the City of Tallahassee Land Development Code to state Architectural Review Board members serve a three-year term, amending Section 2-183 of the City of Tallahassee Land Development Code to state the Architectural Review Board Chairman and Vice Chairman serve a one-year term, providing for separability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for May 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. I do have a note for the record that in Section 2-183, Chairman and Vice Chairman, there is a correction to Section 2-183. It states that election shall be in September of the odd numbered years that should be corrected to, election shall be September of each year. Oh, it didn't accept it.
Great. If there are no issues from anyone, we show those items, ordinances introduced.
That was one. Next one is 12.02. This is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 4 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee. Animals, amending Section 4-2 definitions, amending Section 4-7 animal care, amending Section 4-52 schedule of fines, amending Sections 4-142, 4-143, 4-144, 4-150, 4-151, and 4-152 relating to dangerous dogs, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for May 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Show it introduced.
Next item is item number 12, 12.03, which is ordinance number 18-C-14, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory and, and in residential preservation. One, RP-1, on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts and separability and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for May 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. We'll show it as introduced.
Yes, please, no objections. Commissioners, we're now on to policy, formation, and direction. City Manager, 13.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, you have identified economic development and quality of life as priority areas. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the Tempo program, which touches on both of these areas. It will highlight the ongoing outreach efforts, including collaboration for workforce training, the creation of apprenticeships, opportunity for employment, and ultimately, living wage jobs for our Tempo participants. I think it's safe to say that the program has been more successful than we could have even hoped for in its short life, and we heard some very nice comments from our congressman's office earlier tonight. Dr. Kimball Thomas has led the charge on this, and I think his passion and energy for the topic, his credibility, have made this very successful. I'd like him to give us a presentation tonight and provide you an update of where we stand.
Good evening, Mayor Gillum, respective commissioners, leader of the City of Tallahassee leadership at the dais, and certainly my pleasure to come back to you since we launched this program in October of last year. And what we've done in seven months of time, you see the acronym, we already talked about what that means. And with respect to it, I do want to say, I want to just applaud this commission because of your innovation for this program, an opportunity to go ahead and do this program. You have impacted so many young lives in this city, as you're going to see in our slide presentation. And, and believe me, many of these participants, and eventually all of these participants, are going to come back and say, "Thank you." And I'd be remiss if, if I don't comment on the leadership and support that I've gotten from Assistant City Manager Barber. If anybody knows Cynthia, if I may, she would not allow you to rest on your laurels. So as we converse bi-weekly, she talks to me about, you know, "Kimball, we've got to do more than just get a GED for these students, and we got to do more than just get them a minimum wage job." That is not going to move them and move that progression line the way we want to move. She'd say, "I want you to continue to push it. I want you to continue to think outside the box. We've got to pick it up." So there you have, we're ready to talk about, to pick up the Tempo. Now, you see the numbers, and those are, again, on national norms of one out of every eight youth you have in your city from 16 to 24 would be disconnected. Those are the numbers, those are some of the elements of it. When we first started, we had absolutely no one in this program. To date, we have 200 participants. I want you to think about that for just a moment. These are 200 young adults from the... age of 16 to 24 in our city that we found down Holton Street and Putnam Drive and South Meridian, holding up the wall at King Food Stores. We have 200 people that we have engaged with one-on-one and look at some of our numbers thus far in this first cohort group. 25 are enrolled in GED courses. Four have already earned their GED. I gave you a Tempo perspective in November. I used the initial CH. CH was one person that we found at a vegetable stand on South Monroe. Really not hardly working at all. Boss could hardly get her to come to work. She got into our program. And what I want you to know of that four that's already earned their GEDs, she's one of those four. And she called me up the other day. She said, "Dr. Thomas, Dr. Thomas, I got good news and bad news." I said, "Okay, let me think about this." Give me the good news first. She said, "I've got the GED," and we applauded and hugged, we talked to her mom on the phone and the grandmother in the living room, and everybody was almost in tears, but she said, "I got bad news." I said, "What's the bad news?" She said, "The vegetable stand is closing, and I'm going to need a job." She said, "'Cause I got bills to pay." So, we're going to talk about that a little bit later. Seven apprenticeships already through Career Source, 25 in job screening for apprenticeships. Seventeen of those participants have already been employed. Now, I'll say this, as Ms. Barber and I talked about picking up the tempo, that we got to do more, because these jobs are basically quick service restaurant jobs, flipping burgers, dipping fries, and changing out bed sheets at hotels and motels across the city. We want them to do more. We want their life to understand, and what we want them to understand is that this program is going to reach you to the stars. I got to tell you about these aged-out foster care participants, because foster care age out at the age of 22. I can't say her name directly, again for confidentiality, but I'll use the initials MC. We found MC at the Lawrence Gregory Community Center. She was homeless. She was doing absolutely nothing. She joined this program. She made a commitment. She has her GED, and because of her timeline by state statute that she entered into foster care, MC will be filling out a college application this fall for law school.
Awesome.
I am so excited for her. We have a calendar hold for Cohort One graduation here on July 2nd, and Cohort Two will begin in this October, again in the fall. We will have up to 200 participants, and we just keep rolling people through. Here's, here's my thing with them. I tell them, "As long as you do your part, you continue to stay out of trouble, you continue to communicate with us biweekly, you continue to stay in touch with us, we keep you on the rolls. My intent is not to lose one." Now, why 180 degrees? I'm glad you asked. When we first started this, we really looked at it as a guise of kind of public safety because of what those numbers indicated, keeping them out of trouble. What we also know is that in order to move them forward, we must get them ultimately to a living wage job. We partner with Adult and Community Education. They open arms. At, actually, I become their mentor. I'm the person in loco parentes for them at Adult Ed. Career Source with their work experience program, and I'll tell you more about that. And now Lively. Our discussion is what we want to do with this workforce training is move them from a GED at ACE and have a seamless transition right into Lively. You're going backwards. Now, look at this young man. I'm getting his attention, because now we're talking about apprenticeships, Career Source work experiences, and apprenticeship. You will see soon in these slides, they have 20 local employers that actually give $10 an hour for 320 hours apprenticeships to these participants. My goal is, we need to develop workforce training scholarships so they can make that seamless transition into Lively, trade jobs here possibly with the city. Goodwill has already committed that they were interviewed for potential jobs for these participants, every single cohort group. They get that work experience program from those 20 local participating providers. And from the Workforce Innovative and Opportunity Act of 2014, those courses at Lively cost about $5,000 per student. We get them into those courses. Why do we need the scholarships? You might think, "Well, they qualify for Pell Grants." Unfortunately, if they've ever been convicted of offense, of drug offense, they may not qualify for a Pell Grant, so we do need scholarships. So therefore, we get them through those workforce experiences, and then all of a sudden, what you have, you have from the street, you have to a GED and a work experience apprenticeship program, and now they leave ACE and they go directly to Lively, and they start their workforce training. What happens when all of this comes together? Wow. Look at the expression. We have turned him a complete 180 degrees. All those partners, get this, when they finish the apprenticeship, those 320 hours that I spoke of, they go back to these employers once they get licensure or certification, and we say, and we sit down and say, "Hey, did you like the apprenticeship they had? What do they need to get a permanent job with you?" They tell us what they need. They go into that trade vocational training at Lively, within a year of time, they come out with that certification, they come out with that licensure, and before you know it, those same employers, who they've had a great experience with already as an apprentice, will go ahead and hire them almost cases. We get them jobs from an average of $45,000 a year. They have in one hand what they had on the street, and on another hand now, I can now put myself in a position that I can have a living wage through this workforce training aspect of it. I can now look at even buying a single-family home. What a way to turn people's lives around. So therefore, I'm very grateful and thankful, as you can see on my congressional ass, to both Congressman Lawson and Congressman Dunn. I even challenged them. I say, "Now, since it's reelection time, and you're going to be coming through Tallahassee, it won't be a bad idea to drop off that first apprentice scholarship check at the mayor's office at the commission chambers for one of these disconnected youth." Both loved the idea. Now, whether or not we get the check, we'll see. But at the same time, too, they did love the idea. So, your efforts, the support, again, that I have on a day-to-day basis from Assistant City Manager Barber, the leadership of Tallahassee, General City Manager Code, we've all talked about this work training piece, has led us to, we're not only known locally, but your innovation has put Tempo on the National League of Cities map. We were in the January newsletter. When you look at their re-engagement city profiles, which we're about to, do you notice anything? What do you notice?
Tallahassee, Florida.
Tallahassee. And if I'm not mistaken, we're the first city in the state of Florida to be acknowledged for our re-engagement efforts, and that's thanks to you, all of you, you, and the entire support that we've gotten with this program. I, I am so proud. I'm like a proud papa. And I tell them, I become their street principal, and they say, "You're my street principal now." That's right. I say, "I can't give you ISS or OSS, but I'll give you ASD." And they say, "Dr. Thomas, what does ASD mean?" I say, "After Street Detention at the McNeil House." And all of them have kept their word. Not one have gotten into any offenses since they started this program. And there you are. We are on the national map. Let's click on here, and there's the re-engagement in Tallahassee. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
That's great. Thank you so much, uh, for your passion, for your work. Uh, your effort that you're putting in is clearly shown by the, uh, by the data coming out. Uh, so congratulations for that. Any questions?
You're going to have a big handful of family here before you're on. You've got 200 now, and you're going to have another 200 in October. Are you worried about staffing?
Well, certainly, one challenge I, challenges I do have is that I don't have enough of the male participants being as consistent as I would like to be, so I'm going to need more foot soldiers and mentoring for those group, and, um, we'll continue to push forward.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Wish you continued success.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioners, the next item is item 13.02. Ms. Jackson.
Yes. Do you have before you an item which, um, presents for your consideration, uh, an interlocal, the amendment of two interlocal agreements, one involving the expansion of the Frenchtown, Greater Frenchtown Southside District, as well as a restructuring, restructuring of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Um, each of the two agreements essentially provides for five items. One, the expansion of the greater, the CRA, Greater Frenchtown Southside District, uh, as approved by the CRA Board on March 22nd, 2018. Uh, the map is attached as Exhibit A to Attachment 1. An extension, uh, number two, an extension of term of the CRA, Greater Frenchtown Southside District from 2030 to 2038. Then, uh, the elected officials comprising the city commission will constitute the entirety of the CRA Board immediately upon the execution of the interlocal agreements. Number four, the county will cease tax increment funding of CRA Downtown District in fiscal year 2024, while continuing to fund the Katz Kay's Development, the Firestone Bloxom 440 North, which is the Envision Credit Union site, and Washington Square Development through June 30, 2034. And finally, it calls for parity, millage parity in the city and the county tax increment contributions to CRA Greater Frenchtown Southside District beginning in fiscal year 2019. The terms are, all of these terms are contained in two, uh, agreements which require amendment. Uh, the adoption of number one would provide for the expansion, and then the remainder of the terms, or it could be contained in option two. I present those, uh, recommendations to you for your consideration.
Move approval of options one.
Second.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Sir, second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve options one. And two, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, item 13.04, City Manager.
Uh, 13:03.
13, well, it's, here is 04.
Fiscal year update.
Fiscal year, second quarter update.
Um, okay, we're going to go, we'll, we'll call it both, 13:03 and 13:04, since we're skipping the next one. I apologize. There's a typo somewhere there. Uh, but Mayor Commissioners, uh, over the last couple of years, we've started providing a quarterly budget update so that you've got a, a, a good read on where we stand with our budget, how we're progressing, any adjustments that we need to make during the course of the year. I think that does a good job of making sure we are engaged, making sure the community knows where we stand, and it helps with our development of our next year's budget. Uh, this particular item is an operating budget update through the first six months of the first two quarters of fiscal year 2018. Uh, Robert Wigan, the Director of our Resource Management Office, is here to provide a, a brief update on the 14 operating funds that, uh, we review. Um, and the news is pretty good. We're, we're keeping an eye on a few of them, but Robert goes over the details.
Uh, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners, and appointed officials. Uh, the city, as Reese mentioned, the city has closed the second quarter of fiscal year 18. Uh, with six months of data, we can look and estimate out into the end of the fiscal year that those 14 funds will result in balanced budgets, um, across those 14 funds. We use performance measures, uh, as well as financial metrics. I'm pleased to report, and as you well know, that the performance outcomes are, are very positive. Uh, for the first six months of this period, violent and profitable crime is at a five-year low. We know that permit activity is up for this six-month period, and then long-term economic outlook indicators are very positive. You know, we're per capita the fastest-growing economy. Uh, exports have grown over time. Um, besides these outcome measures, we also, when we're looking at the 14 operating funds to see how they are proceeding financially, uh, we feel great comfort in, in seeing that a lot of the metrics are very positive for the general fund, for the utilities. Uh, there are three funds that we are looking at closely to monitor over the next three months. We feel like we'll have some good results over those three months, but we wanted to bring them to, to your attention. Uh, you know, Star Metro ridership for paratransit activities is up. Uh, that puts them in a position to be challenged from a staffing perspective, relying on overtime, relying on, on shifting drivers around the various services that they provide. Um, they are, as you, as you well know, they, they are funded by grants, uh, by, by, uh, bus fare, by FSU contracts, and then a transfer from the general fund. Uh, if the trend continues, then we'll have to look to see what upward pressure that puts on the general fund. Um, but, but again, they're, they're taking quite a few actions to make sure that as they, as they enter the set, the summer months, that, uh, they can control staffing and, and deliver the services that we expect. Uh, and two other funds, the Water and Sewer Fund, very procedurally, they've gone through their, uh, their bond sale. Um, they are looking at what the debt service, uh, uh, outlook looks like, uh, with, with an adjustment to that debt service, uh, uh, payment schedule. Uh, they should be fine for the end of the year, but we want to see during the summer months as their sales progress, whether the two balance out. Uh, so those are the three funds that we're monitoring. Uh, the other 14 funds are in a balanced budget state and look very positive. Um, we feel like we're positioned well with our priorities, uh, from a financial and a performance, uh, standpoint, and then we've got some upcoming commission meetings with, with responsibilities. Uh, June 6th, we'll bring back, uh, balanced budgets, uh, with, uh, understanding of where we are currently for proposals for fiscal year 19. Uh, July 11th, we'll bring back the third quarter update, uh, ideally with balanced budgets across these 14 operating funds. Uh, in, by August 4th, we, we need to vote on a proposed millage rate, and we expect to bring that to you in June, uh, to adhere to the 4.1 millage, uh, rate property tax that, that you've indicated that, uh, will support our police, our, our parks and recreation, and our public infrastructure work. Uh, and then lastly, we'll have public hearings in September on the 12th and 26th to bring to a closure, uh, our, our budget year, and then propose our final budget for 2019. Um, there are, um, uh, we'll ask that you accept, uh, the update for the second quarter of the fiscal year. There are three amendments that we are taking advantage of, uh, as long as we have an agenda item to make changes to the, to the fiscal year 18 budget in electric and in community beautification, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you. Questions seen on, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Move acceptance.
There isn't.
And with the adjustments.
Option one.
Yep. All those, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to item 13.05.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is an emergency management update. Um, as I think we all know, hurricane season starts next month on June 1st. Uh, summer got here fast, and it's important that the community is prepared. This item provides an update on, on our emergency preparedness for this upcoming hurricane season, and also, uh, shares some insight about other resiliency efforts that are underway. So it's beyond just, uh, hurricanes and storm preparedness, but resiliency spans, uh, in, in, in manifests itself in many different ways. Um, we can be impacted by other shocks and stresses that can disrupt city services, compromise public safety, and negatively impact the quality of life. Uh, you authorize us to move forward with a community resiliency plan, so we want to talk a little bit about that tonight, and again, highlight, uh, our preparedness and encourage our community to be prepared for this upcoming hur- hurricane season. Chief Jerome Gaines, who's leading these efforts, is here to provide the update tonight.
Good evening, or good afternoon.
Good evening.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, elected officials. I want to give you an update on six specific areas, uh, as it relates to emergency preparedness and resiliency. But as you know, or as you stated in 2017, you asked the city to move forward with a resiliency officer, and I'd like to introduce that individual tonight. This is Abena Ot- Ot- Otcheo. Tyo, I knew I was going to butcher that, but I wanted to say just a few things for a few seconds.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to meet you. Abena Otcheo. Um, I started with the city in mid-October, and I have been, uh, I've had the pleasure of meeting so many of our, our city officials and, uh, staff members, but also a lot of our community stakeholders, and, um, I can't tell you the excitement that I've seen, um, even within our community, but also from communities outside of Tallahassee that are excited to see a city like ours pursue resilience with such intentionality. And so we're eagerly moving forward. We have engaged a consultant team. We have working groups that are meeting already and thinking about what it means for Tallahassee to be resilient. And it, a lot, it includes so much, as City Manager has noted, to everything from reliable infrastructure to, uh, secure families, to building capacity and, uh, with individuals and homes to be self-sufficient. We're looking at the whole gamut, and, uh, we'll be looking forward to bringing for you recommendations towards the end of the year or early in the, uh, 2019. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, the rest of it is what staff's been working on as we talk about emergency preparedness. We've obviously continued to work with Leon County Emergency Management to further strengthen our collaborative efforts and relationship to make sure that we're prepared for this upcoming hurricane season. The staff has also completed required coursework to provide foundational training for our employees so we can take care of that training in-house, uh, obviously at no cost to our employees to make sure that we're prepared. During the week of April 30th, the city participated in the state's hurricane exercise to test our abilities and capacity as a joint response and recovery effort by the city and county. Also, supplemental staff or emergency program was implemented last year, which has been retooled in order to train approximately 500 city employees to provide additional non-emergency operations support activities, which will address things such as customer call centers, first responders, food, logistics, and neighborhood conference stations. Under electric, electric storm, electric storm has, the plan has been updated. Electric is coordinating with the Leon County Emergency Manag- Management Office on updating the priority circuit listing. They are working with the city's emergency management team on the supplemental staffing needed to support electric. Inventory levels within the utility service center have been reviewed and orders placed to ensure storm-level stocking is in place prior to June 1st. Electric and customer service staff has met with Leon County Emergency Management and representatives of local nursing homes and assisted living facilities to discuss new emergency power rules and pre-storm coordination. Under community beautification and waste management, community beautification and waste management is meeting with all three storm debris vendors to include an amendment to the contracts that will allow for liquidated costs for subcontractors leaving before the recovery is complete, revenue returned to the city for the sale of recyclable materials collected, and the requirement of a minimum number of trucks dedicated to the city for recovery efforts. They have also met with Leon County to work out details of identifying city trucks that transport storm debris to the landfill. This will provide accurate, accurate tonnage and cost in the event the city seeks reimbursement through FEMA. They are also working with city radio communications department to create a dedicated storm channel for community beautification management, uh, and underground utilities so they can commute, communicate. They have worked with Leon County, the Department of Environmental Protection, to identify and certify temporary disposable staging sites. They've created assessment debris removal teams with department inspectors and supervisors, and these teams will conduct an assessment of the city to determine the volume of debris and what areas impacted the most. And then they will provide focal points where the initial recovery will begin. Under underground utilities, underground utilities has developed a more formalized protocol for processing emergency response information requests. This includes the receiving, dispatching, and tracking of recovery effort information to maintain situational awareness. They have also developed a software program that allows them to take information from the county's web EOC and integrate it into the utility work dispatch system. They have also established two emergency response centers from which to stage their personnel during these types incidents in advance of approaching significant weather. They also have ensured that sandbags, sandbags are made available to the citizens, and their 800 prefilled sandbags are always available. They have 100,000 empty sandbags in inventory, and they have an agreement with a vendor to provide an additional 50,000 if necessary. Under the neighborhood outreach, through the Neighborhood Perv Program, the city's Neighborhood Affairs Division is working with neighborhood and homeowners associations to better, to better prepare those communities for disasters and emergencies. They are coordinating three community-wide interactive training workshops scheduled for these neighborhood associations. And at the workshops, neighborhood leaders will learn about the program, they will receive the newly revised neighborhood prep toolkit, and they will have an opportunity to participate in a perp, prep table exercise and learn how to build a build-your-bucket workshop in their own neighborhood. And there will be three throughout the community, but the last one was held last night at Walker Ford Community Center, and, and I have to say, we attended, and it was a successful program, it was a, a lot of interaction with the neighborhood association representatives, and it's something going forward that I think is going, I know is gonna be a great benefit to the community. Under communications, they have implemented a strong outreach campaign that utilized a variety of methods to get the message out to the residents, to tell them about the importance of being prepared for the hurricane season. The campaign aims to empower the citizens to plan and understand how to respond best for the, for the situation. A joint press conference is being planned for June 1st, which will be the kickoff for hurricane season, with representatives from local government, Leon County Emergency Management, other response agencies. And on Saturday, June 2nd, the City, County, and American Red Cross will again co-host the annual Build a Bucket Hurricane Preparedness Event at the Florida, North Florida Fairgrounds. And finally, in that, we are providing 800 attendees with buckets with, which will have limited sample supplies and informations from nonprofits. And what we're encouraging through all this, through all the hard work that we're doing to prepare for this season, that we're encouraging the citizens, the residents, that the only way we can do that is they work together and they make sure that they're prepared, that they can be self-sustaining for 72 hours until we can get those additional resources to them. So that's the message that we're pushing. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Chief. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.06.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioners, this item is a follow-up to your discussion at the April 11th meeting, where you directed staff to bring back additional information and fiscal impact regarding the firefighters' request to reopen the collective bargaining agreements as it relates to pension. Um, we worked directly with the union leadership to clarify what the scope of that request was, and the request was to roll back the employee contribution rate for pension for the remainder of the contract term to 16% by the employee. Uh, the term ends September 2020. Um, that change is estimated to cost $1.3 million. That was a, a question that you had. In your agenda item, it outlines that pension costs were discussed at length during the contract negotiation, and as summarized in your agenda material, each of the three city pension funds, that's general employees, fire, and police, are unique and the benefits are different. Uh, and the, the things such as accrual rates, cost of living adjustments, vesting times, they do have different characteristics, and as such, they have different costs. In the case of the firefighters' pension fund, it requires the highest level of contribution as a percentage of payroll combined between the city, uh, and the employee. Uh, and it's the lowest funded, so I think there was recognition about that. In fact, I know there was recognition about that during the contract negotiation. Uh, considering all of these factors, uh, in others, uh, staff recommends that you make no changes to the collective bargaining agreement, uh, and we work on these again, uh, at the next cycle.
Commissioner Ziffer.
I'm gonna go ahead and move Option 1. I, I've spoken with the, um, City Manager at great length about this, and, um, I think his comments are pertinent and appropriate, and so, as I said, I move Option 1.
There's a motion for Option 1, is there a second?
I will second. And the reason is that, uh, after reading over this, I can see why you all agreed to all of these, all these numbers. And one number is not separate from any other. There's a cost, and when I realized, when I saw here that this was the most expensive plan, and it was only 78% funded, I think back a year or two ago when y'all were having this conversation, it was more fresh in everybody's minds, including ours. But at this point in time, with negotiations coming up in another, probably barely two years, the, the main thing to decide here is how to reduce the cost of the plan, if you want to reduce the cost of the, of the contribution, or it will not be there for you in the end. None of this affects us. We're not in your union, but it will very definitely affect all of you. So the reason that, it seemed to me that the reason that the decision was made and that you all supported it was that that's what it was gonna take to have these benefits at these levels, to make sure those benefits were there for you when you needed them. And to go back now and say, well, we just want to roll back, I mean, I've all, been all about equality the whole time, but this plan is much more extensive than the PVA plan, and I think that, um, we're gonna run right into the very next negotiating session, and this is a good time to be looking at this and see what, how you can reduce the cost of the plan before you decide that you want to stop your contributions.
There's a motion and a second, were there other comments on that? Commissioner Richardson.
I, I want to, uh, agree with the comments that Commissioner Miller made. I, I, first of all, want to let all of our firefighters know how much we value the work that they do. Uh, certainly, uh, the young men that we recognized earlier in the meeting are primary examples of the kind of persons that we have in our, uh, fire department, and, and certainly the work that they do in putting their lives on the line for us every day, uh, not just in instances like what they were recognized for. My concern is that we not put ourselves in a position where we jeopardize our pension system. You know, I've kind of followed from afar, uh, what has happened in Jacksonville, and I've talked to some friends who are involved in that process in Jacksonville, and we certainly don't want to ever, uh, get ourselves in that kind of position. And so, I, though I, I can, I understand, uh, the wishes and desires of the union, I, my preference would be that in two years, we take another look at this, and over that period of time, have the city manager and staff maybe look at some ways that we can address this issue then, but, but certainly protecting and maintaining the viability of our pension and benefits program for you all and for those that, uh, will be joining you in, in the future. And so, given that, I, I would support, uh, the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Got it. Um, I was just looking at the kind of contribution difference between the police and fire. Um, you know, fire employees are at 17.5%, police employees are at 13.69%. I would be in favor of something closer to parity. Um, frankly, I think, uh, fire, as I said before, when we brought this up the first time, demonstrated, uh, I think, a real willingness to cooperate, um, with us. I think they were extremely, uh, flexible in hearing the city's needs as well as ours, and I'm sorry about the, about the hearing, but it's going in and out. Um, and so for that reason, I will, uh, oppose the motion.
Three, two.
Commissioners, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes, three, two. Commissioners, we're now on to item seven, uh, 13.08. I'm sorry, is that right? Yeah, oh, eight.
Uh, oh, seven.
I believe, oh, seven, Mayor.
It's oh, seven. I've had to renumber here, and I'm now confused. Um, this is the bond issuance.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Sir.
13.07.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a resolution, um, that you passed to allow the city to issue bonds to fund a variety of, uh, capital projects. It's really a, the resolution itself is a fairly straightforward part of the process, but from a policy standpoint, we wanted to be sure to note that, um, these are capital bonds. These are bonds that will fund a variety of infrastructure projects, that's been a priority for you, um, for a long period of time now. Uh, included on this are some projects related to Weems Road, McLevy Boulevard, Richview, and the largest, um, individual project within this is the final portion of Fam U Way. So we've, um, made great progress on Fam U Way, and this will help fund that last portion, so we just wanted to bring, bring that to your attention. Um, and if you want to act on the item, I do have another comment or two I'd like to make, Mayor, related, but I'll let you, um, address the item first.
Move approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, uh, staff recommendation, all those, did you need to make your comment before?
No.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Treasurer Clerk?
Yeah, just, uh, wanted to be sure to not let the, the opportunity pass. This is, um, the fifth of a series of bonds that you have either issued or approved, um, and they'll all be issued within a, a window of, I believe, 12 months or less. Um, a couple of those were refundings in a home mortgage situation, you call that a refinancing, we saved a bunch of money. Um, several of them are for new money to construct the projects that, um, you've approved to, to move the community forward. But I wanted to be sure to express appreciation to Deputy Treasurer Clerk Kent Olson. He has done a yeoman's work of carrying these forward. Currently, he is traveling back from the Government Finance Officers National Conference, he's a member of the State, um, Board of Directors, so he is there, and even though he's not here, I wanted to be sure to acknowledge him. I don't think that the city of Tallahassee has ever issued, um, the number of transactions or the total dollar value in such a short period of time, and he has worked closely with Rob McGara, Mike Tedros, uh, Robert Wigan, all of your city team, it's one of those where you're gonna forget to name somebody when you win the Oscar, but, um, everybody's done a great job of working together, and I wanted to be sure to acknowledge Kent. Um, the, the other thing I wanted to mention is, as we were here tonight, the previous resolution that you approved was on some consolidated utility systems, water, sewer, and stormwater, and we've just gotten, uh, notice from Fitch Ratings that they affirmed our double A-plus rating on those.
Right.
So those continue to be well-received in the marketplace and, uh, viewed by the investor community, and a lot of that is always due to commission leadership. One of the things they noted was that, um, the rate changes you've made will allow us to do a significant amount of the funding on our own, not just through borrowing, and so just like in your home finances, you want to be able to pay cash for some things, even though there may be some long-term items to borrow for. So that, that was great news, even though it's not on this particular resolution, um, a recent approval for those bonds, I wanted to be sure that double A-plus was recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, uh, for that. Uh, Commissioners, we're now on item 13.08.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Wait, you blew right through that. Um, on the comment question, it, it was clear in here that there were gonna be standards that were gonna be upheld, and I just wanted to say that on the record, that I'm voting for this because I'm understanding that there are gonna be standards in here that we're going to uphold, people that, things that we've told people we're gonna do, the way we are doing redevelopment in that area, because there are a significant number of people that are worried, that was said, well, we didn't think we're gonna sell any more property in this area, but that this will mean those, the 18 feet back to, from the curb will be public, uh, public property, essentially, it'll be public use, sidewalks, you know, and space between the sidewalk and the street, all those things that we talked about earlier today, so.
Yes, ma'am, that's what, that's, that's what we will do.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioners, we're now at the, uh, point of the meeting for, um, speakers who are not speaking on agenda items.
Mayor, we do have several speakers. Uh, the first speaker we have this evening is Ashley Smith. Um, as with our earlier portion of the meeting, speakers can come to this microphone in the, in the middle of the room there. There will be three minutes for each person's remarks. Um, if they will each start with a name and address, we would appreciate that, and then your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. My name is Ashley Smith, 2259 Paul Russell Circle, 32301. Thank you, Mayor Gillum, City Commissioners, and leadership for allowing me to speak before you today. This past February, I was, I was walking to my job on the city sidewalk when I fell on a disjointed concrete slab. Um, that injury consisted of some scrapes, some minor scrapes around my face and my nose and my knees, and then two broken teeth. I was frustrated with the city, and I thought, how can I rectify this issue? I did not want to go into legal, legal, legal terms at all, because what I wanted is change. So what I want to do today is thank you and the CRA for starting to redevelop the city. I've seen, I've seen the redevelopments, redevelopments in the bond community, and I've seen the pride that the neighborhood now has because of us beautifying the city so that it could be equally involved for all of us or equally developed for all of us in all areas of the city. What I do want to encourage and urge you is to, I, I know it's easier said than done, but to continue to repair the city under the CRA parameters, to make it livable for all of us to live, work, and play here, because it's essential. As a young professional, it's essential for us to see the city growing and constantly developing, but also not to forget about the other areas who are stifling, um, with, with trying to be adequate citizens in our community. So I urge you all, I thank you initially, and then also encourage and urge you all to continue doing the great job you all, all are in making sure the CRA is taken care of in the city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for taking time, uh, to come down and advocate on that.
Absolutely.
Keep coming back and encouraging the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Run for office.
People that are retreating.
Next speaker, Mayor, is Jerry Phipps, and then Erwin Jackson.
This is for you. Come down. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name's Jerry Phipps, 34. My name's Jerry Phipps, 3563 Clippies Drive. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak. It's been a while since I've seen someone do. I wanted to tell you about Be The Solution. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is to educate Tallahassee area residents about the need for spay and neuter and also to provide the financial assistance for those who can't afford the procedure. I am the president and the founder of Be The Solution and it means so much to me. And to date, we have financed the surgeries for twenty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight animals and at fifty-one dollars a surgery. BTS partners with area veterinarians to provide safe yet low-cost spay-neuter vouchers in an effort to prevent the unwanted litters of puppies and kittens and a huge thank you to those vet partners. BTS also partners with animal control and with our local rescue groups, excuse me, by giving them our spay-neuter vouchers in an effort to prevent those litters. Whenever they're in the field, they'll come across people who need help getting their pets spayed and neutered and they have all the vouchers that they need in order to get the job done. And some of these groups are CICA, Southeastern Community Cat Alliance, Iman, I know you guys have heard of them, Leon County Humane Society, Leon County Animal Control and Vocal Voices of Chance Animal League and also last but not least, certainly, Tallahassee Animal Service Center. In the last seven months, BTS has seen a huge increase in the amount of vouchers being redeemed with our partner veterinarians. For comparison's sake, 2015, we spayed and neutered three thousand four hundred and seven, 2016, three thousand four hundred and three. It stayed pretty much the same. And then in 2017, it jumped to three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine animals and that was a twelve point five percent growth increase which comes down to a little over twenty-one thousand dollars and we were able to absorb that. In 2018, the trend is continuing and we've already grown by just January to April, one thousand five hundred and thirty-six animals. And if it continues, let me get to my notes because I got on a rant. If this pace continues, we're going to increase this year by another eight hundred and fifteen animals, which is a lot and that growth rate will represent twenty-one percent growth for 2018, which is more than what we can handle. Our total for the year would be four thousand six hundred and forty-four animals and at a cost of fifty-one dollars per animal, that comes down to forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars more than what we paid in 2017. And honestly, we are not prepared for that. So, but as of September 2017, we were doing great. That's how sudden this increase in numbers have happened and I don't know if it's because we've been around ten years or if we, maybe we just have a few cat groups that are competing. I don't know. But anyway, our donations and our fixed thrift shop were handling all of the bills as of September 2017. So, I'm here today to ask for your help once again. It has been four years since the city and the county awarded BTS sixty-five thousand dollars back in 2014 and thank you again for that. That money helped us bridge a gap in funding and gave us time to get caught up so that we had no interruption of services, which is what we do not want. This growth is a good thing. We should be doing this. I ask you to consider funding the extra eight hundred and fifteen surgeries at the approximate cost of forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars, split forty-sixty with the county. The county would contribute sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six and the city would contribute twenty-four thousand nine three nine. With yours and the county's contributions, Be The Solution will spay-neuter those extra eight hundred and fifteen animals. Owners of these animals will provide proof of need and will reside in Leon County. Our plans to increase funding going forward include fundraising with the Talleytop Pet Fundraiser, marketing with our Spay a Month Club, which is a new club we started, basically like what the membership club Leon County Humane Society has, and also to increase the sales at the fixed thrift shop through better social media and better overall marketing. I can provide any financial forms you need and I can meet with any of you at any time to talk further about this, but I did-
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Please, I did present this information to the county last night or yesterday afternoon. After I left, I received a text from Mary Ann Lindley and she did say in her text, "We just now voted unanimously to add the sixteen thousand to our next budget discussion, which is in June. I think it will get full approval, but it would be good for you to speak to each commission if you haven't already."
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to us talking about it during our budget.
That seems like the appropriate step to take.
That would be awesome.
Thank you for the work you do.
I would also say if there are other, we have a number of vetting avenues for city funding. If someone could also make sure they connect with Ms. Phipps to ensure that she's aware of what those options are. Great.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you and I will be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
And just for my part, I'd like to just ask the city manager to work with Jerry and see what you can, see how you can make this work. And I have a question for Jerry though, right quickly. Again, I asked this earlier of Dr. Thomas, how are you going to pull this off? I mean, this is a significant increase over even just two years ago, just workload. So, how, where, who is going to do all of this work?
Well, we already do three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. I mean, it's, we have so many partners. The county and city officials, all of the rescue groups, they're the ones out there. They've got the paper in their hand. We sit in our desk or we write out the vouchers. I'll write a hundred vouchers out for county animal control.
Okay.
And Kara Aldrich takes them off or if Jeff Doyle calls, he's got a special case. That's all he's got to do is ask. And honestly, I won't let this go without getting some funding. I'll figure out a way like I have figured out all the rest of the ways.
I guess what I'm saying is, after they get the vouchers, they just take them to a vet?
They take them to a local veterinarian, one of our partners. So, it's a well-run machine. It really is. It's just a matter of keeping the cash coming in and we really just weren't ready for this growth. It just, it hasn't happened at this pace ever.
I want to take a look at why you think that might be happening too. When you come back in June, we'll talk about that.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson and then Stanley Sims.
Let me give a brief intro. Dr. Erwin Jackson, Tallahassee Truth Teller, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Commissioners, I have created a public service announcement I want to share with the public today. It's going to last about thirty seconds and I would ask that the camera crew be sure and show the video in its entirety to those citizens at home. And give us a second.
What is?
I just have a question to the city attorney if we have any obligation to show something like this. Do we have any obligation to, on the city's television, show something like this?
City controls it's station. Just apply the same standards we always apply.
Got it. What, decency, appropriateness, so on and so forth?
I think this is my three minutes and you interrupted the music.
Yeah, of course.
So, we need to get an extension of the three minutes, please.
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson, if you would take your seat and someone can work on the video or something, that's fine.
Well, your talking is a problem, not the video. I played it all. I came here an hour earlier to play it. It worked just fine. It's the interview and it's a problem.
What?
We can do that. I'll finish this. We'll try to get that and be here next week to play it. Scott, I have enjoyed our three-minute video discussions over the past six years. I have forgiven you for your lying, your name-calling and all-around verbal abuse that I've endured from not only you, but John Marks and Andrew Gillum. However, as this PSA shows, you will always be remembered as the poster boy for pay-to-play in Florida's capital city. This is a title you rightfully deserve. Finally, the public will learn who's been lying to them for years. It's also very disappointing that every member of this commission was well-aware of your actions for several years and remained silent because they were engaging in similar self-serving actions or chose to look the other way for political reasons, unable to see the clouds, as they say. I have been told that the long-awaited knock on your front door from the FBI is only a few short weeks away. I've suggested the FBI that they arrest you after my three-minute presentation at the city commission meeting for greatest impact. We can only hope. The only good from your current predicament is that you will be put away where you can no longer steal from the public. Your removal will also send a clear message to current local politicians and those seeking office. If you choose to steal from the public, you will ultimately be exposed and prosecuted.
Excuse me, that's three minutes. Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor. Your pending arrest will show the public- I am very troubled by some of the accusations today. At a single voice- Very troubled by some of the accusations- -speaking the truth for only three minutes- ...that Mr. Jackson has made this evening and I'd like for the attorney- ...can bring down the most powerful- ...on what our recourse for action is. ...financially secure, well-connected individual in our community-
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
...and your expensive legal team.
Thank you. Your time is expired.
Those are certainly my opinions. I want to share them with you tonight.
Yes. The city attorney, Commissioner Richardson, I mean, I think I know the answer to this. Unfortunately, elected officials, the public officials have a very, 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 very high bar to clear when it comes to slanderous or otherwise malicious comments from the public. Obviously, you're the city attorney in case she has another read on that, but any recourse-
The truth is not slanderous. Mayor. I'd like for our attorney to answer my question.
Thank you.
Commissioner, essentially what we have here is a forum that we set up for comment and as Mr. Jackson said, he's making comment based on the parameters that we have set up. The city is not required to have a forum or open mic, but we have decided to do that and he is speaking within the confines of that. Other than a disruption to this commission, he would be, he should be permitted to speak.
Commissioner Miller.
My question is, I can understand the need to have a time for people to make comments. I don't, what I don't understand is the ability for someone to come in and use the taxpayer-funded facilities and video equipment and so on and so forth to show their own videos and that they produce privately and, you know, with their own money. If they want to put those on a radio station or something, they would certainly have to pay for the time. I don't really understand why the city equipment is really open to just anybody to come in here and put whatever they want. I remember a lot of discussions about having a city channel that was open to the public way back when I used to work with the Sierra Club and basically the city had some sort of ability to say, "No, we don't want to really do that." But I really don't see any difference here in this. So, you're going to get yet another challenging task going soon.
Commissioner Miller, the answer to your question. This is your microphone. I helped pay for this microphone. It's the public's microphone.
Sir, your time has expired. Your time has expired. Mr. Jackson, that courtesy is extended to all citizens, however, not to be abused. So, if you respect your time, limits and restrictions, we encourage other people to do the same.
You were the ones who interrupted my three-minute presentation by speaking which affected the music.
You had all three minutes, sir. You had all three minutes.
I understand us having a public forum to allow people to speak, but when they get up and accuse me of illegal actions, just, there has to be something that can be done about that.
Well, I will certainly take a closer look at that-
I would hope that you would.
...and examine it further and I'll give you an opinion.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Stanley Sims and then Alexandra Buss.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, Tallahassee, Florida. I come with good news and bad news. I do want to commend Dr. Kimball for the work that he is doing in this community. As I am traveling in this city, I do see that, I think it's 21316 or whatever the little car is scooting around. And I want to commend him on his work because a lot of things that he has said is within my proposal. And I'm very sad this afternoon. Well, I'm also elated, Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Gillum, because the integrity of the process and the fairness of the process for all citizens is very important. And for you tonight to stand up and to say, "No more passes or express lanes for anyone" was very rewarding for me on my journey of seventeen months of trying to bring fair-wage jobs to this community. And it was really heartening to hear Commissioner Scott Maddox advocate to get this express way for them when I've tried to reach out to him to talk to him about my program and he won't. And Commissioner Miller won't. And Mayor, there I am trying to pull together the information that for your staff, I want to say in these last two weeks, they have been very nice. Mike, I can't pronounce his last name, so I don't want to mess it up, but in my disappointment after marching on April 26th, it was epic. I enjoyed it and then to receive that disappointing news that our program was not funded. And again, publicly, Ms. Jackson, I want to thank you because you did not have to come down and speak to me, but that was professionalism. And the insult that when I extended my hand to the interim city manager, that he would not even shake my hand, gives me great caution that if you don't have enough professionalism about you to shake my hand, then can you really be honest and objective when it comes to directing my tax dollars? As I come to a close, I'm hurt. I don't like this slanderous that's going on and I guess I can take a part of that. I can take responsibility of that because when a person is desperate and feels like the world is coming in and I'm being painted as this angry black man and a part of that paint is being used by individuals who's known me since I was little, that's a lot to take. And so, only my comfort now is in you, Commissioner Richardson, and in you, Mayor.
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
I'm winding up. I'm winding up.
Thank you, Ms. Sims.
Just thirty seconds.
If you could wrap it up.
Okay.
Please.
I, only thing that I'm asking, Mayor, is that the information that I was supposed to be compiling with by issues of concern, I've been told by city officials that they cannot meet with me regarding my project or share any information. So, if you can be of assistance on that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Alexandra Buss.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Buss and thank you for having me here, Mayor and Commissioners and City Attorney, City Manager and City Treasurer Clerk. I am of 522 East Park Avenue, Suite 101, 32301, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm here representing the organization Marcy's Law for Florida. Marcy's Law for Florida is an organized effort to amend the Florida Constitution to provide victims of any crime with a voice in the judicial process by ensuring they are notified of any hearings, that they have the right to attend and speak at any hearings and the right to be notified when their perpetrator is released from any type of confinement. Marcy's Law for Florida was passed by the Florida Constitution Revision Commission with a thirty-four-three vote. The proposal will appear on the November 2018 general election ballot as amendment number six. Marcy's Law has received broad bipartisan support for a wide variety of state leaders, public officials, community leaders and business groups. Endorsements include Florida Governor Rick Scott, former Florida Governor Jeb Bush, State Senator Lauren Book, thirty-seven sheriffs including Leon County Sheriff Walt McNeil, five state attorneys, seven clerks of the court. And organizations include the Florida Council Against Sexual Violence, the Florida Police Chiefs Association, Florida Sheriffs Association, the Justice Coalition and Mothers Against Drunk Driving, along with the Peyton-Tut Hill Foundation. We recognize and appreciate the influence the Tallahassee City Commission has within the capital city, which is why we believe your support of Marcy's Law will be critical for its success. Please consider publicly endorsing the inclusion of Marcy's Law in the Florida Constitution. That is my ask tonight. Thank you very much for having me here and if you have any questions, I would like to be able to answer them for you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, that's the last speaker. I did have a form for Pat Tut Hill, but I think I've been informed that I won't be able to be here at this time, so that's the last, we've completed our speakers.
Commissioner Miller.
I do have a question. What is our, I know we don't want to make a decision basically tonight right quick before we have information in front of us, but what is our disposition toward the approval or disapproval of the amendments that are proposed for the Florida Constitution? Do we have a process for that or?
I mean, I think obviously we can take liberty. The issue, what I think we ought to look a little deeper at is what is coupled with Amendment Six and I'm not quite sure what is. I mean, the problem with these amendments is that they are each laced with some poison pill. There are three issues on each one of them and I think, obviously, the commission can express its desire on any item if we choose. Certainly on that one, I'd love to obviously be supportive, would love to know what else is coupled with it on this, on this constitution.
Good.
Commissioners, we're now at the point of sharing of ideas and I just wanted to share two. One, I want to invite Raoul Levin to come forward to introduce one of our stellar ICMA fellows.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, we've hosted ICMA fellows for the last eight or nine years and they've come from mostly Southeast Asia. ICMA partners with the State Department, the U.S. State Department, and the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative to bring young and up-and-coming leaders to the United States to learn how we do business, how we do processes. And we're fortunate this time around to have Mary Joy Gonzalez, she goes by Yoey. And I know some of you have already met her, but she's an environmental planner specializing in disaster risk reduction and climate change adaptation. So she's here learning a lot about what we do to deal with disasters and other issues. I'd like for her to come up and just say a few words. And she's been with us for two weeks. This is her second week. She'll be with us for a total of four weeks and we've got a busy schedule for her. She's been quite busy since she's been here.
Raoul, while she comes, would you tell the audience here and our listening audience what ICMA stands for?
Yes, ICMA is the International City-City Management Association and it's a premier organization in the country, actually internationally, for city managers and city management issues.
Thank you. Welcome, Yoey.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm Yoey. Good evening, everyone. I think I've met almost everyone here in the room. And in behalf of the Philippines, ICMA and the YCLE program, I would like to extend my gratitude for the city of Tallahassee for hosting me and ensuring that I get to meet who I needed to meet and go to relevant agencies and departments. And they have been very, very welcoming so far. And I hope that I'd be able to take away some very good learnings and best practices in terms of resilience. And I'm very glad that I am here to witness the works of the newly-established resilience office and to be able to meet the many great officers working on disasters and emergencies. So again, in behalf of my country and also the local government of Cadiz City, which I am working with, thank you so much for the warm welcome, literally and figuratively. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Yoey. And a little geography that I got to learn, I was wondering, I mean, we all hear about some of the larger cities of the Philippines, but the Philippines is made up of over 7,000 islands. Of those 7,000, I understand 2,000 of them, north of 2,000 of them are actually habited, inhabited. And the work that Yoey is doing is really critical, particularly to an island that, a set of islands that are impacted by about five typhoons that make landfall a year, which makes her job extremely important as a resilient, resiliency expert, as a city planner, and also coming from the largest inhabited island, inhabited city, rather, in the Philippines. So welcome and we wish you well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioners, the other item on sharing of ideas that I wanted to just make you all attuned to is that tomorrow morning, we've actually been having family-first activities happening all week. We were with entrepreneurs and business owners last night, the day before, nearly 200 providers. We're at the Turnbull Center and tomorrow is our big culminating summit. So I want to once again extend the invitation to any of you all to join us. We start at 8:30 in the morning and will be done just afternoon. And it promises to be a really great set of conversations and experts talking about the state of children and what we can be doing as a community. One, to update on the community on what has been done, but also what we can continue to do to further deepen our commitment and support there. So I want to personally invite all of you all for that. And then finally, for me, Happy Mother's Day to my mother and my wife and to all of the mothers out there and wish them well as we approach this celebratory Sunday. Commissioner Richardson followed by Commissioner Miller.
Could I ask a question about your program tomorrow? I'm going to be going to Goodwood for a visioning thing, so I can't go, but I wanted to know how all these ideas that you've brought forward can feed into the children's services project.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine that that will be part of the conversation tomorrow. My hope is, is that, you know, as you're aware, Commissioner, the committee that staff's bringing together the summit every year, they almost nearly work year-round. They are, basically, all the advocates that we all can name and many that we can't name who have surfaced through this process. Obviously, the county still has some decision-making to make there, but it would be my hope that the work that we've been doing will continue to be an educational springboard for citizens. It will be livestreamed as a way of educating the community and also we've got methods for playing it back. We're doing it in partnership with, I believe, WCTV again is one of our media partners who will do their own sort of snippets of stories or vignettes, if you will, of how these issues impact folks on a pretty regular basis. And obviously, if this commission decides to engage itself more in this Children's Services Council debate, you know, we can make other decisions around what we want to do with that material.
Okay, good, thank you.
Appreciate the question. Commissioner Richardson.
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, starting at 3 o'clock, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., is the opening of the Southside Farmer's Market. So for anyone who wants to attend, it will be at the Walker Ford Community Center. That's our attempt to, the community's attempt to bring fresh fruits and vegetables to an area of our community that's considered a food desert because many of the children and families in that area don't have ready access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And so this is a tremendous addition to the South Side of Tallahassee. And so, and beyond tomorrow, I understand that a couple of days a week, it will be open and available for citizens in that area or from whatever area of town they want to come and partake in that. Also, last night, I attended the Leon County School Board meeting where my daughter was transitioning off of the board. It was her last meeting. And the board chair mentioned that the county commission had had a workshop on the ALIS report. ALIS being asset limited, income constrained, unemployed. And we've got many of those individuals in our community who are not, their income is not low enough that they can qualify for certain state and federal programs and services, but they're living paycheck to paycheck and they may be one paycheck from homelessness. And the chair asked for a workshop for the board, for the school board, on the ALIS report because the county commission had just had one. And so I wanted to, I talked with the manager about this, that maybe we look at considering having a workshop on that report as well because it does impact our children in the community and the quality of life that they will enjoy and their families. And so I wanted to ask that we look at doing a workshop on the ALIS report and then maybe we can either have staff come together from the city, county, and school board and see how we can move forward as government entities in addressing the issues in that report. Some we may already be addressing through workforce training and economic development, job creation, but just to look at where we are as a community and how we can assist that group of individuals in our, in our community.
All right. I'll coast on that. Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, sir, just a couple of items, Mr. Mayor. One is Tom Bullhill, a retired firefighter, kicked off a walk from Key West to Tallahassee to bring awareness to firefighters contracting certain cancers due to connection with their employment. He has with him 25 to 30 walkers that have spanned the state and also is carrying with him mementos and even remains of firefighters who have passed from cancer. As many of you know, Chris Thurman, who was an outstanding firefighter here in the city of Tallahassee, died not too long ago of cancer. So they will be leaving Station 6 tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. and will be marching to the Capitol and I wanted to let folks know about that. And the second is that Ervin "Mr. J" Johnson, who was a skycap at the airport for 27 years, passed away. And he was a skycap in Miami prior to that. I met him, he'd been here about two years when I was first elected. He was a good friend and was one of the best ambassadors for our airport and our city. He recently celebrated his 80th birthday, retired and passed away a couple of months after, so want to let his family know what he meant to all of us.
Here, here, Commissioner. Thank you for raising the memory of Mr. J. We presented, our office presented a medallion to him on the celebration of his birthday and the airport staff, along with the management here, put together, and the Delta employees put together a very fine 80th birthday for him out at the airport. But if anybody who has traveled through our airport, whether, didn't matter who you were flying, if you encountered Mr. J, you were left with an amazingly positive experience and impression of our city and he'll certainly be missed by not only his family, but many of us. Commissioners, if there are no other sharing of ideas and nothing from the appoint, there is, I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller.
Just want to end here.
It's all right. Go ahead.
This is National Drinking Water Week. And we should all have a, drink a glass of water.
I'm sorry, did you say it was National Drinking Week?
Drinking water, yeah, right. National Drinking Water Week. And we should all toast to that because we have such wonderful, clean, clear water here in Tallahassee and it's so tasty. I wanted to give a shout-out to the fact that we have an accredited, a nationally accredited water quality lab that tests over 16,000 samples of water every year to assure that everyone has safe, clean drinking water. Our water comes from the Floridian aquifer and it's quite a challenge in our community to keep that clean because the Floridian comes right up to the surface of the water, of the land, right here where we are in Tallahassee. So we have to be very careful and that's, I'm very proud of our city for the fact that we have been able to keep as much pollution out of the, out of the water as possible. And it seems to be doing, we're doing reasonably well at that. I would say we're doing exceptionally well at that. So just wanted to share that. We have been supplying clean, fresh water to people for over 100 years and I hope we continue to do it for another 100.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If there's nothing further, we stand in a German.